Meeting, I'm Ashley Stolzmann, the mayor. And because COVID-19, our meeting's being held electronically and is being recorded. So just because we have so many participants, if folks could stay muted until they'd like to speak, and then go ahead and unmute themselves, that'll help reduce background noise. And then when it's your turn, when people want to say something, if you could please use the raise hand feature, which you'll find at the bottom of your screen. People who've dialed in by phone can dial star nine and will see a raised hand appear on your behalf. And so I'll call on folks when they raise their hands. And for members of the public, when public comment period comes up, if you'll please tell us your name, your address, and your question concern. You'll all have three minutes in public comment periods. And LRC commissioners and council members will have as much time as they need. But because we have such a large group, I'll encourage everybody to keep their comments concise if possible. And I just want to thank you all for helping to maintain the decorum by following these directions. And so to start off the meeting, if we just want to go around and introduce ourselves. And so it's always awkward on Zoom to do that. So I will call on people to introduce themselves. So I'll just call you by your first name. And then if you tell us who you are and what body you're serving on, that would be fantastic. And so I'll start, I'm Ashley Stolzmann, Mayor of Louisville. Debbie?
Debbie Fahy, I'm Ward Two City Councilman for Louisville.
Bob?
Bob Tofti, LRC Commissioner.
Jeff?
Jeff Flipton, Ward Two City Councilmember.
Thank you, Alex. Alex, you're muted.
Alex Korczewski, LRC, sorry about that.
Thank you. Chris?
Chris Lay, Ward One City Councilmember.
Caleb?
Hey guys, Caleb Dickinson, City Council, Ward One.
Thank you, Corey.
Hi, Corey Williams, LRC, sorry I was a few minutes late.
No trouble at all. And the names are jumping around on me, so if I miss anybody, I'm sorry about that. As people join, they jump around. Dennis?
Dennis Maloney, I'm City Councilperson from Ward Three and also am honored to be the Mayor Pro Tem.
Graham?
Graham Smith with the LRC.
Thank you. Lexi, did I call on you already?
No, Lexi Adler, Chair of the LRC.
Mark?
Mark Gambali, Vice Chair of LRC.
All right, Caleb, did I call on you? Thank you, sorry about that. Okay, so have all of the council member like I called on you? Chris? Yes? No? Sorry. Written it down, they really did start jumping around. Have I missed any commission members or council members? I guess.
We could go around again, I think.
Do it again. All right, well, thank you all so much for being here tonight and joining us for this joint meeting of the LRC and the City Council. And so just to start off, I'm going to show some slides that the commission members and council members might find redundant, but I want everybody who's watching, whether they're members of the public or council or the commission, to all just sort of be on the same page. So I'm going to try to blow through these really quickly. And then I'll turn it over to Lexi to fill us in on the conversations today at the LRC. And then we'll open it up for discussion with the whole group. And I'll try my best to go through these slides really quickly, not to bore you all. And they are attached as an addendum online, so folks can look at them and have them later if they want. And so with that, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, everyone. And is it advancing? Now it is. So this first slide here just shows some public input that we got in the transportation master plan. So City Council hears about the need for all sorts of different improvements in the city from community members all the time. And from different variety of community members, whether it's from an open space focus, a business focus, a transportation focus. And so this here represents the feedback we got from members of the community in the transportation master planning process. And we asked people, you know, if you had a hundred dollars, how would you spend it? And we got feedback from many, many community members. And you can see the number one thing that people wanted to spend funds on was underpasses, followed by commuter rail. Really, safety is a key theme here. And multimodal access is a key theme here that we heard from people. And then just going ahead, you can see this is the slide from the transportation master plan that shows the On Street Network with the current underpasses in green as green squares and the desired locations from community members for future underpasses in yellow squares. And then, of course, you all know this, but just for folks tuning in from the public, we just are meeting tonight with the Urban Renewal Authority, who is working to eliminate blight in our city, particularly in the urban renewal area. And one of their roles is to work on improving existing infrastructure to facilitate redevelopment. And so that is the intersection of Council, LRC tonight, where we're having the conversation. And then this, just for folks that are tuning in to watch, this is the urban renewal area. And you can find this in the condition survey. So there are six underpasses City Council is talking about, but only three of them fall in the urban renewal area. So we really will focus our discussion on those three. But I will just really quickly update everybody on what the other locations are, just so that they don't feel that we've missed them or left them out. So just again, reiterating, the main focus of the discussion will be on these top three that you see here, the South Boulder Road and Main Street, the South Boulder Road and Highway 42, and the Highway 42 near the Ball Field underpasses. And the other three that Council is considering are not within the urban renewal area. And the way I've listed this here, the street that the underpass crosses under is listed first. And again, these are all in the attachment. It's an addendum posted online that folks can look at as they please. So the first location to talk about is the South Boulder Road and Main Street underpass. This one, we've done a lot of work on over time. So you can see here from the comprehensive plan follow-up small area plan, that the underpass is actually shown here as a desired improvement that community members told us about. And this was from back, I think, in 2014, 2015 timeframe. These are some images from the urban renewal area. These are properties that have features that, you know, the Urban Renewal Authority, of course, is looking to remedy to make it more vibrant and inviting. And so back in 2018, in October, City Council looked at five alternatives at Main Street, at the Main Street Crossing. And the Council really honed in on this alternative, which is alternative two. And it was based on feasibility and things. The alternatives were very varied. They included an overpass, they included different locations within this segment. But this was the one that seemed the most feasible. And we asked staff to do some additional work. So then back in March of 2019, the additional engineering and design was done on this underpass and looked, you know, more closely at what it would take and the costs for completing this underpass were arrived at $8.739 million. I just included some of the rendering, so folks could kind of vision what this might look like if it were built. This is one of the most complicated locations that we'll be talking about this evening. But you can see there would be an approach. The ramps all have to meet ADA requirements to make sure that wheelchairs can safely go down them. And so a lot of that dictates how far back the ramp has to go on all of the different sides. And then you can see this is the area that would have the retaining wall, so you can kind of get a feel for what it would feel like approaching from the north side. And you can see what it would look like approaching from the south side. The next underpass that's in the urban renewal area that we'll talk about tonight is that South Boulder Road and Highway 42. So these images are from the Highway 42 plan that was done many years ago, over a decade ago, I believe, or on that timeframe. And you can see in yellow, there's this grade separated trail that's to be a multimodal bikeway. And the way that was envisioned, it really would just stop right at South Boulder Road and 42 and turn to the east. And in the transportation master plan, we got a lot of comments from community members to connect that up to the north, so that you would be able to get to the shopping center in the King Supers area, so that you would be able to access the Lake to Lake Trail that I'll talk about in a moment here, that has the crossing at Highway 42. So the next underpass for discussion in the urban renewal area is 42 and the Ball Field. This comes all the way back from 2003. This is the Revitalization Area Framework Plan. And you can see that even back in 2003, the Council and Revitalization Commission were looking at connecting the downtown area and the core area of the revitalization area up to this open space to the east. Similarly, in the Fast Trax Plan, you can see this is the station area that was proposed for our downtown Louisville train station that was envisioned. And you can see that the overflow parking was envisioned to be on the actual east side of the street there. So that idea of connecting the pedestrians across was envisioned in that plan as well. And then that's carried out again in the transportation master plan. And you can see C here, that's a connection somewhere along this range, so that folks can get under that Highway 42 area and safely cross and connect to the open space and the potential overflow parking for commuter rail. So just really briefly, this is not the focus of tonight's meeting, but I didn't want a bunch of angry emails from citizens saying, why didn't you talk about the underpass that, you know, impacts me the most? And each different underpass definitely serves a different constituency, whether it's a commuter or a trail user or a student going to school. So I don't want to leave anybody out of the discussion. So the first one to look at here is number three on this map. This is a wayfinding plan that the Open Space Board and Parks worked on. It comes back from 2014. And this pathway three is known as the Power Line Trail, which dead ends right there at Dillon Road. So it was envisioned that there would be some kind of a crossing there. Two things were happening simultaneously when City Council was looking at some at-grade crossings. We were looking at the construction of an at-grade crossing with a Hawk Beacon and simultaneously developing the transportation master plan. The cost escalated on the hybrid beacon project. And so you can see the cost increased from what we had budgeted, and it made it all the way up to half a million dollars. And at the same time, the consultant for the Transportation Master Plan project told us that we would need to add an underpass here at 88th and Dillon, where there's already a signal, because there's a queuing problem with traffic during the peak periods. And so having additional lights at the Power Line Trail ultimately would result in the need for an underpass there, just like the one at 88th. And so we said, you know, rather than put the money in, the half a million in, and then have to go back and rework it, we basically put the project on pause to determine if there was an alternative that wouldn't need to be taken out in the future. South Boulder Road and Via Appia, and also the Bullhead Gulch that we'll talk about next, both run along this path called Number One. And that's known as the Lake to Lake Trail. So the ultimate envisioning is actually to go from Marshall Lake over here all the way to Wannika and Lafayette. And you see it passes by Heckla and Harper and Lake Park on the way. So it goes past all of those. And really, the two locations where there are missing links are Bullhead Gulch and Via Appia. And you can see also in the small area plan that that underpass was envisioned at Via Appia. And then you'll see it over here again at Bullhead Gulch to connect that Lake to Lake Trail link. So the Via Appia underpass was also studied back in 2018. And you can see this was the configuration that they looked at most closely. This takes up a lot of park area with fallout there. So there may be some alternatives that we look at in the beginning of June that run the underpass more parallel to the canal. And then just last, I already mentioned it, on the Lake to Lake Trail is the Bullhead Gulch. And here's the renderings of that, we've designed that completely. And the cost escalated, so I just included in there for you. From the 2019 discussion, the cost escalation brought that total cost of the project up to 5.8 million. And so we would have had to have a substantial budget adjustment to be able to cover the complete cost of that project. So at that time, Council put it on hold to have this future discussion that we're having now about how we could more holistically fund all of these projects. So we're here today to talk with you all really just about the underpasses in the urban renewal area and to try to understand if there's any partnership that could proceed forward. And then Council's going to review concepts, more refined concepts on those locations at our June first meeting. And then we'll continue after those meetings to evaluate funding going forward and potential ballot measures. So thank you very much for allowing me to just go through that, to just sort of set the table and get everybody on the same page. And with that, I'll turn it over to Lexi Adler, the President and Chair of the Revitalization Commission, to tell us what you all have been talking about so far. Lexi?
Thank you. I wanted to start by thanking City Council for the opportunity for us to have a joint discussion this meeting with LRC and Council. I am just providing a brief summary of the LRC's introduction to this proposal and the timeline thus far as best as I can. So at our April 14 regular meeting, the LRC's City Council Liaison, Chris Lay, very briefly discussed the project and what was shared at the City Council meeting just the night prior. And we didn't have time on the agenda for discussion here. So we had that brief introduction. And then at our May 12 regular meeting, we had about 40 minutes total of staff presentation and commissioner questions and discussion on the proposal and the potential ballot measure. And this was framed as a discussion and direction item on our agenda. So staff gave us a presentation and then commissioners, in a very organized format, asked specific and technical questions of staff and using the raised hand function and all that to keep some order there, because there was a lot to discuss. And then there was some opportunity for discussion as well. And then in terms of direction to staff, commissioners did come to a consensus that there was interest in further discussion on this topic. And we also came to a consensus to direct staff to prepare information for funding considerations at the amounts of 500,000, 1 million, and 1.5 million. But commissioners also asked staff to provide additional information to other questions they had. So it looks like now we have the opportunity to have an organized discussion about topics, this topic. And I really encourage all folks to participate. Okay, I'll send it back to Ashley.
Thank you so much. And so at this time, I'll ask members of the public if they would care to comment on this agenda item and tell us what you'd like to tell us. If you dialed in by phone, you can raise your hand by dialing star nine. Being no one, I'll come back to council members and commissioners and ask if there's discussion and topics. Graham? Commissioner Smith, sorry about that.
No, Graham is good. Commissioner Smith sounds way too official for me. Can we just state on the record that it is legal for us to use funds for a project that is only partially in the URA? Because I have yet to get that stated really clearly from legal.
We can absolutely get legal to write a letter about it. I can tell you, the Urban Renewal Authority has used funds outside of the urban renewal area before. Let's see if Kathleen is on. I don't see her, I don't think we ever had her come.
No, Kathleen's not on tonight, but yes, that's correct.
We have used them outside of the area before, and it is legal. And we can get a letter if that helps the commission.
I just want to make sure that, yeah, that's covered. That's the last thing.
The last improvement was for a stormwater improvement. And so it affected the area, but the funds were spent out of the area.
Gotcha. And so I guess my comment would be, what is the specific ask from City Council? Is there an actual number you guys are asking for? Or is this a kind of negotiation?
That's a great question. Mayor Pro Tem Maloney, I don't know if you wanted to answer that question or if you wanted to have another topic. When we talked as a council, we really talked in principle around the underpasses in general. And, you know, whether or not this would facilitate redevelopment in the urban renewal area and the partnership. And we kind of love the meeting thing. It would be really great if you all could participate to the maximum extent feasible. But then to understand what you all felt that that was. And so that's where I feel that we left it, but Mayor Pro Tem Maloney may want to add more.
I would like to add more, but the first thing I want to do is, you know, we had scheduled a meeting with the LRC, I think it was for last June, and it got COVIDed. And so, you know, I apologize for that. And I also wish that we could be meeting in person. You know, I think that the City Council has deep gratitude for your commitment to serve on the LRC. And, you know, we want to thank you on behalf of the city and the people that we, you know, we serve in the city. And serving on the Louisville Revitalization Commission, we know it takes a lot of time and effort. And we appreciate your time, your expertise. And Graham, your question, it's an excellent question. Let's make sure we're doing everything the right way. So there's no question about that. You know, I think that it's a good question. I think it's a question that we need to put in the parking lot of something that we need to address and understand. You know, the City Council at this point in time has been talking about, I mean, how many of these underpasses do we want to do? Do we want to do all of them in the urban renewal area? That's something that'll have to be defined, and that will lead us to what that number is. It's also important, I think, to me and to the other councilors, that the funds that the LRC has are really supposed to be spent in very defined ways. You know, infrastructure investment is important. But there is also attracting new investments. And there's prevention of deterioration of properties in the urban renewal area. And we're seeing those things, some of those things happening. The other thing, as we know, is that the LRC or the urban renewal basically runs for another 10 to 11 years. And so we need to start looking at what funds are available, what investments make the most sense and make the greatest impact. So as we do that, and that's a lot to ask in the next month or whatever the timeframe is, because I believe your next meeting is June 16. But what is that number, what makes sense? And I think we have to weigh that as a council and as an LRC and come to an agreement that makes sense. Whatever doesn't get invested will increase property taxes. So we always have this balance that we'll have to be looking at. So Mayor, I don't know if I helped answering the question or not, but that's certainly my thoughts on that topic, and thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Graham, it's a good question, I think. It's like, you're skipping the end, man. Come on, we got more process here, you can't just go to the answer. No, I think what we're really excited about is collaborating, right? And is trying to figure out what makes sense? You know, how important is this to the LRC and your goals? And what you're trying to accomplish for our city? How important is it to Council? How important is the residents? What's the right amount total to spend? What makes sense for the LRC to contribute? Of course, you know, as it's envisioned in this moment, half of the underpasses are in the URA, which is kind of remarkable. So certainly, we're, you know, I think we're hopeful that there's a partnership with you guys where it does make sense to spend some money here. And of course, trying to be, you know, Mayor Pro Tem Maloney pointed out a bunch of good, a bunch of good stuff around, you know, the length of the funding and the other things that need to be funded, so I won't repeat all that. But, yeah, I think trying to figure out as a whole group, you know, what is it that we're trying to accomplish? How important are each of these things? What can the LRC do without, it's a strong statement, bankrupting yourselves? Where you can't do anything else, like, we don't want that either. But this does seem like a great project for the LRC to, you know, dig its teeth into and work with us on. So just, yeah, trying to figure out, like, what is that number? And is it all six, or is it, you know, a set number? So I don't want to, it's funny, right? I don't want to overstate anything, because, you know, as a council, certainly as an individual of the council, I'm not in a position to say, like, we need X from you guys. It's more this conversation, which I wish we could have more often. And again, to Mayor Pro Tem Maloney and the mayor, it's like, it's so nice to be sort of in the same room with you guys. And I've been on council for 18 months and 15 of it in COVID. And I wish I got to meet with you guys more often. And I used to go to the LRC meetings at the library. And, you know, I think this is a good step in that dialogue and communication. And, you know, I leave it to the mayor as far as, you know, what the objectives are for today and what we're trying to get to as a final answer or number or what have you. But I don't think, what I know is council doesn't have a unified, this is the number we're asking for, are you willing to give that or not? It isn't that simple. It's more, we've got some ideas, 500, 1 million, 1.5 million, like, what could possibly work? And what are the constraints and what are your guys' thoughts on it? So I hope that feels authentic and genuine, that we're not, we don't have an ulterior motive or a preconceived number that we want you guys to do. We want to collaborate with you and see what number makes sense, if a number makes sense. So that's all I have right now, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gambali.
Thank you. I want to echo what was just mentioned, which is collaboration. I think we are looking for something significant like this to partner with you on as a collaborative effort. It seems like we have a common vision and goals. And this is just an awesome opportunity to have a big project to work with you on and figure out, how do we get to that opportunity where we're supporting this master plan goal, but also focused on our mission too? With the right planning, we can do this and look back at it and be super proud of it and go, wow, I'm so glad we did this well in a collaborative effort. And you're right, we only have 10 years left. So I definitely want to look back at this and go, look what we did. We supported the area and the business as well. I'm very excited about this conversation. And just thanks to you all for all the work you've done to set this up. I guess my question is, I love this data-driven approach of saying to the community, what would you do if you had 100 bucks and you split it up? I'm really curious, have you also asked the taxpayers, well, to what degree are you really willing to fund this effort? Or is it great in concept, but not something that they would approve when it comes to time to vote? Have you actually asked any of those questions yet?
Thank you. And just, I'm going to go through the hands, and then I think I'll note down questions that get raised and then make sure if they don't get answered, that we circle back and address them. Chairwoman Adler.
Thank you. Council Mayor Stolzmann, sorry, I'm not used to this. I think I also wanted to preface this discussion, talking about our mission as the LRC and our purpose. And I would hope that this guides, helps guide conversation tonight, because I think it's a really important piece of the picture. I know folks are aware, but our mission includes implementing the Highway 42 Revitalization Area Urban Renewal Plan, which was approved, adopted, and approved by City Council back in December 2006. And the purpose of the Highway 42 plan is to, as you all know, reduce, eliminate, and prevent the spread of blight within the URA, and also to stimulate growth and reinvestment within the area boundaries and on surrounding blocks and through downtown. So I am just asking that that is a piece of the discussion. And other questions I will have tonight around how and if this works towards our mission, what data will we or will we not receive? Do share responsibility to the property owners assessing this process and proposal like the LRC application process for assistance? And then also thinking about impacts to future projects that we can potentially fund? I think I said a lot in there, but hoping we can touch on those topics as well as work plan items that haven't been budgeted for.
Thank you, that's fantastic. Commissioner Williams?
Hi, everyone. I too appreciate the opportunity to connect with council and just have this conversation. It's really helpful to not be in our own individual silos, having this conversation, but to be able to talk together. Some of the questions that I have kind of echo what has already been mentioned, but one of the big questions on my mind is if LRC decides not to support this initiative, will the city still move forward with it? And then what is the possibility of us only funding those underpasses under the URA? The Highway 42 project? So basically, it would be a percentage, you know, based on, the percentage that we would contribute would be based on that. And just also, I really appreciate the contributions from the community, the letters that we received this week. Just providing a little bit of history as a new council member and relatively new to the Louisville politics, it's helpful to get a little bit of the history behind what came, how this all came to be. So I really appreciate the history there and just wanted to acknowledge those contributions. And then my final comment for now slash question is, sort of echoing what Lexi just offered up as well, is what evidence is there that this supports downtown businesses? That it attracts businesses and that it reduces blight in the sense that it applies to the URA? So that's all I have for now. I did write it down, so I can always repeat later. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith.
Yeah, and sort of to Mark's point, right, of looking back on this, right? If we do it and we move forward and ten years from now, we look back on it, we've got six really nice underpasses. But Coles is still closed, the old Sands Club is still closed, the Alfalfa's is still closed, the Old Waterloo is still closed, the Wildwood Guitars is still closed. Would you consider that, that we've done our job as a commissioner? And that's an honest question. Have we done our job if all we've produced is some underpasses and we haven't been able to support a lot of these vacancies in these areas that are trending towards more of a blight condition? I just hesitate to sink such a high percentage of our flexible funds into a project that, while it could definitely justify it in terms of its added value to the businesses and its added property value, I don't think it has the same impact as really helping out that shopping plaza that's right next door. I just, if all we get out of this are underpasses, I would give the LRC an F. And I don't know what the rest of the committee feels, but to me, that really is where it comes down to. If this hamstrings us and prevents us from doing projects that would really benefit specific locations and specific blight conditions, it doesn't sit well.
Commissioner, thank you. Commissioner Toffey.
I also am looking forward to the collaboration with the city council. And thank you for setting this meeting up. As a couple other commissioners have stated, I guess I'm more interested in the underpasses that are in the urban renewal area. And I believe that there are a couple of projects coming up that are going to command our attention, but we don't know to what extent. And I know that, you know, one of my questions would be what's driving the timeframe for this discussion? I've heard that it's not necessarily as positive to go for a bond issue on a national election year versus the upcoming year. So I guess I'd like somebody to weigh in on that, on the timeframe that you're asking us to, to deal with. Also, as Graham stated, it's real, it's very difficult for me knowing the Coal Creek Station being so close to my house and so many years, it's been just an empty lot that gets mowed, you know, once or twice a summer. I really think that whatever we can do for a project like that and also for the Alfalfa's and Walgreen areas probably equally as important to me as the underpasses. I would love to see them. I certainly would love to see the two under Highway forty-two or the one under forty-two and then at the corner of South Boulder Road and forty-two. And I can't think of a project really that's more important than getting under South Boulder Road at Main Street. But I sure want to see the information that we've asked for from the bond people and from Kevin about the half million, million and million and a half commitment to these projects. So I guess those are my thoughts. I really kind of sit with Graham on this where I want to see the urban renewals mission talked about first.
Thank you. Commissioner Gorchewski.
Yeah, thanks. I was, I was thinking more about the timing in terms of building all three in a row? Or are we going to do one and see how it does? Because for me, I'm with Bob. I think the one at Main Street is the biggest one. I think that's the one that would get most use. It's going to connect the north area to downtown, to the URA. So I think that would be the most effective. For me, if we go forward, I'd like to stagger them. I don't think there's really, well, maybe there is a very good reason to do them all at the same time. But I think there's too many unknowns. There's a federal infrastructure bill, maybe, and light rail. We don't know exactly, well, maybe we do, but when forty-two is going to come in? So those are just kind of, I don't want to rush into it. I want to make sure that we still have enough funding to get to everything else we need. But if I had to pick one, I think I'd look at that one at Main Street first.
Thank you. So I'll just weigh in a little bit. So we can definitely have discussion on each of these topics as people want to weigh in on more things. I'll try to give you my thoughts on some of these, but just to be clear, like, these are my thoughts. And the city council members may feel different. City council as a body may feel different. But I believe I'm representing places where we have consensus correctly. So today, we really are not looking for support on the three underpasses that are outside of the URA from this group. Like, it really would be a collaboration only on the ones that are in the area. And I just mentioned the other ones, just so you would know, like in the background, that we're looking at these other underpasses too. And in case folks are tuning in from home and they didn't see the underpass that's really important to them, for whatever reason, they wouldn't feel like, you know, we just have dropped it off the face of the earth. So we really are only talking about a partnership on the underpasses that are in the urban renewal area. And I'm really very grateful that you all are bringing up the purpose of the Urban Renewal Authority, because I think that's exactly how you should be framing your thought process, and that's fantastic. I would ask, you know, to look back at the last, you know, couple of decades on urban renewal in our city and ask if we've been successful as well as going forward. You know, I think that question that Graham put forward is spot on. Like, are we doing things that are eliminating blight, improving connections? Are we meeting the goals of the plan? And since I've been on city council, I don't feel like we necessarily have had the best collaborative process. A lot of the things in the urban renewal area that have needed infrastructure investment because of deficiencies, the city has ended up having to pay for entirely. So the city removed the urban renewal area from the floodplain. The city has had to put in the majority of the infrastructure for South Street and for the traffic signal. Like, there are a lot of physical infrastructure improvements to Highway forty-two that we've had to make downtown. We've had to make a number of improvements. So I'm heartened that you all are looking at this more critically and really trying to consider like what things need to be in place to eliminate blight and address exactly what was written in the framework plan. Like, that makes me filled with joy. You also have a very limited timeframe to get that accomplished. So like, there's not a lot of capacity left to bond, if any, for your funding. And so I do think, like, figuring out, like, what is the plan for this closeout period? And how do you best be successful in eliminating blight? I think that's fantastic. I personally think that these underpasses could really stimulate economic activity. I personally think that they really do go along with the goals and missions. But I think that's for each commissioner and community member to determine and come forward and, you know, say this really will make a difference. And if we target it at economic development, I think we can have a good impact. And there are examples of that throughout the Denver metro region that you can turn to and look at. So I think it's worth pursuing. There was a great question. If the LRC decides not to move forward with the funding, would the project still move forward? I think that's a big question mark, probably not all of them. I mean, the council really has had some hard discussions about how much property tax the community can stomach. And like, we don't want to, we don't want to force community members into a position where it's unaffordable, even more unaffordable. So, you know, minimizing the impact to community members is really important to us. So having that support and help from the LRC definitely would increase the chances of the three in the urban renewal area moving forward. But that, you know, discussion has still to come. What's driving the timing? So we've been talking about these things. I mean, like I showed you in the presentation I showed, there's been talk and study and talk and study dating all the way back to at least two thousand and three, perhaps even earlier. And so I think, you know, last year, we had talked about moving forward a transportation ballot measure. And with COVID and everything, we said we would delay it a year. And here we are a year later, and now we're talking about it. So this is the time where we're saying, hey, if we really want to put these visions that we've spent all this effort and time on discussing into action, do we want to ask the voters if they'd be willing to pay for it? And to Commissioner Toffey, there's all kinds of things people do to try to improve their chances on ballot measures. And I will say, we've done none of that. I think it's like, we're just going to the community and asking, is this something you're interested in? Not any intention on trying to game it. So there, there are probably as good reason to run it in on years or off years. And there are all these people who spend a lot of time making sure you do it exactly right, so you have the very best chances of succeeding. And on this one, we just have heard from people so much that they want these underpasses. And we have to keep telling them, like, we cannot just afford to pay for them. So we're looking at what are all our options to be able to try to deliver on it. And then Commissioner Gorchewski brought up the issue around timing. I believe, you know, what I've heard our public works director say is that it would be good to be able to package them and bid it that way. And then also have them individually packaged and bid it that way and see if we get favorable pricing one way or another to try to reduce the community's costs. So I think that the timing on how we would sequence them after would be to be determined based on what makes it the best value to the community. So thank you. And I'll just continue on in order the hands are raised. Chairwoman Adler.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a question. Maybe this is for staff or mayor, just clarification. Can we talk about the timeline in terms of making decisions? When, if and when the LRC would need to make a commitment? When exactly the ballot language has to be finalized? This is a tight process, so I'm just trying to understand all of the pieces of the puzzle, make sure that we get there.
Yeah, thanks for that question. The city council has to make a decision if we're going to go to the ballot this year by July. And so that backs everything up into the discussions that we're having. And so the city council would hope to know from your June meeting if you're committing to a partnership. And I figure, and so, sorry, I got text messaged. So that, the July date is really what backs us into our timeframe. But cities go on forever. And so, you know, if we don't succeed this time, then, you know, we'll continue talking. But that June meeting will be really important for you all to determine where you're, where you're feeling that your level of commitment is. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, that's, that's what I, I thought our meeting is going to be mid-June. And is that, is that date early July for you or what? At what point in July? I know, I guess we have to make a decision in June.
City Manager Bolster, is there a fixed date in July?
Yeah, so, right, you're having a discussion in June, which will review projections around what, and again, they're also projections, but what the anticipation is for different dollar amounts and what is anticipated your revenues to be over the next ten-year time period? So that'll be on the sixteenth. So we're hoping to get some direction as to if you're, based on the last discussion, that you're interested in continuing this and understanding what a commitment might look like is to get a decision on what that commitment might be. And then we, we're having a special meeting planned for June seventeenth with city council to get some final direction. And then we on July thirteenth, which is our first meeting back at council, because summer has, I'm sorry, city council has a summer break. So July thirteenth would be the first reading of a ballot issue and July twenty-seventh would be the second reading. So depending on your direction in June, we then bring back something to LRC, a cooperation agreement, which might require a special meeting of the LRC. Then it would go to city council and then it would have to go back to LRC for final approval. So, you know, having to figure out what that schedule looks like. But certainly, first reading is July thirteenth of the ballot language, second reading is July twenty-seventh.
Thanks, Hannah.
Thank you. Councilmember Lipton.
Thank you. I do have concerns about this project. And I've stated them publicly before in the city council meeting. I think this process has been, well, I think it's been light on process. I think it's been light on analysis and cost estimating. And I'm sure it's, it's a bit light in terms of what we're asking you to do in terms of trying to move quickly and make a commitment. I did sit on the LRC, I think, for two or three years, and I did learn a lot about the LRC. And but first, I want to back up, because I'm not sure it was specifically mentioned, this whole, we're not necessarily committing to building three or six or five underpasses at this point. And I think the direction we're trying to go is to see how many we could possibly build using internal sources of cash to pledge towards financing for the underpasses. So, you know, we're looking at taking money from our capital improvements project fund. We're looking at taking money from the general fund, looking at possibly using some of our reserves. We're trying to cobble together a number of sources that could support some form of bond issue before getting into the discussion about whether or not we need to raise taxes. So part of that conversation happened to also include the LRC and the Urban Renewal Authority and participating, you know, in a financing that would also include a lot of city sources. The LRC, I mean, I think you're framing this correctly. I mean, you've got a charter and you've got goals and you need to stay consistent to those. And I do want to make one comment about the issue of taxes. You know, I'm very personally reluctant to go to the taxpayers and ask for a tax increase for these. If that we can find a way to fund these over time with the existing cash flows that we derive by a city, perhaps through the Urban Renewal Authority for some participation. You know, we talk about taxes, we could go to a ballot and, you know, and the citizens might approve. But the fact is, businesses don't get a chance to vote. And if, in fact, you're worried about blight and commerce and economic development and all the good things that you should be, you know, worried about, raising property taxes becomes somewhat self-defeating towards those goals. And, you know, by a factor of four times. So if we look at a property tax increase for residential, the rule thumb is it costs a business four times that amount. So you're already collecting taxes from businesses. And much of your district, if not all of it, it's probably just much, is our businesses. And they're already paying taxes. They're paying a lot of taxes and they're paying a tax increment that you're collecting. So to the extent we could use some of that perhaps towards some of these improvements, as long as they're consistent with what your goals are as a Urban Renewal Authority, I think is certainly a benefit not just to the city, but also to the, you know, people in the businesses that you're already collecting taxes from. When I sat on the Urban Renewal Authority, I mean, it became apparent to me that for whatever reasons, and there weren't, you know, nobody was necessarily at fault, but it was difficult for the Urban Renewal Authority to spend money on things that were related to reducing blight, as far as, as well as intentioned as everybody was. I mean, it was a list of potential expenditures, perhaps, that required participation on the part of private developers, private property owners. And, you know, at the end of the day, it was very difficult to actually digest the money that you're already deriving. Now, I would personally wouldn't suggest that, you know, we'd want to use all the money that you're collecting. But I think a significant contribution certainly might be appropriate. Because when I look at the list of things that you're considering, I'm not sure how much of that will get knocked off anyway, just because you can't get others to have the same appetite or interest for doing those projects, including private property owners. So there would have to be a major paradigm shift over the next, say, five years. So there would have to be a major paradigm shift over the next, say, five years or three years in order to uh change how we're operating as an urban renewal authority and change the ability to actually make investments over the relevant ten, eleven-year period of time. So I, you know, that's that's an observation from being on the Urban Renewal Authority. I I know you guys have kind of reformed. We've got some new members. You're working hard at establishing priorities and work plan. Underpasses have been on your work plan now for many years. And I I noticed they've dropped a little bit in priority, but I think that's because of the amount of money that they cost. Not not whether or not we need them or they would be helpful, but, you know, it's just it would suck a lot of money from your discretion refunding. So, you know, what we're asking you to help with is not something totally out of the blue. Actually, it's been in your list of priorities in your work plan for many, many years. But this is the time, I guess, some members want or, you know, part of the community wants to move forward with these projects. So this is the time that they're coming to you to ask for some support. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickinson?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'm I'm happy to wait if you want to hear from anyone that hasn't spoken or I can go.
I I'm just taking the hands in the order they came up, so.
Um, so um, yeah, here's things uh to piggyback off of what Jeff just said. You know, I I think one of the ways I look at it is um, you know, we're the L R C to have a um goal of putting three underpasses within the U R A over the next five to ten years. It's um undoable for for your budget to to make that happen. So I can imagine the conversation happening in the opposite direction. Is this something that's really important to us? This is connectivity from other parts of Louisville. This is connectivity from Longmont and Lafayette. And this is important to us and it's a priority and you've been doing this. Will council work with us to get these underpasses done? Um, I think that would be a rational conversation and and um something that we might entertain, right? And instead, we're going the opposite direction where we're saying, hey, this is this is an idea and and we'd like to work with you. Um, but I I I think this is mutually beneficial. Um, and and I don't, I don't think, I guess, I guess what I'm trying to say is I don't think of this in any way, shape or form as an ask as if like like a favor, like it's not, this is, this is, I think, a mutual goal we have. Um, how much it benefits uh or how much it decreases blight or benefits? The economy is up for debate, but certainly, you know, connectivity between different parts of town or different towns and us, I think, is is huge for um the downtown area. Uh, and I know that infrastructure, as I was learning, you guys all know I'm pretty new to council, but as I was learning about a lot of things and 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 L R C being one of them, trying to think about like, what are infrastructure projects that the L R C can do? I mean, it was before my time, but we're talking like a a parking garage, right? It's like, it's a big project, super controversial, definitely not something we're doing in any any time in the near future. But that like, okay, so that's like a big infrastructure sort of thing that the L R C could possibly do. So my brain is what what other major infrastructure projects are there for the L R C to be doing within the within the 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 area? And I think underpasses really fit that for me. Um, and obviously, like, you know, the safety aspect of 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 those crossings. Um, and as far, you know, the question, which of course, you know, none, no individual council member can answer. Um, but to the question of, does this happen without L R C support? You know, we we don't know, but I think Councilmember Lipton made it made some really good points there around. You know, uh, so the the math I have is basically um a million dollars of uh debt payment gets us maybe best case scenario, twenty million dollars of uh funds to spend. That's like the best case scenario with the longest repayment, the lowest interest rate, all that stuff, like nineteen point something. Um, so best case scenario is, you know, a million dollars gets us twenty million dollars to spend. And at the highest amount, we've talked about forty-eight, fifty thousand dollars for all of the underpasses. So without the L R C money, we're talking about either a much smaller project or going to the taxpayers to ask for property taxes. And, you know, I, for one, of course, I'm speaking for myself, am less interested in going to the taxpayers for an additional property tax. And we have to go to taxpayers for whatever we're doing, but an additional property tax is um less appealing than trying to figure out what we can fund ourselves. So if the L R C doesn't assist with with some funding, the project either has to be smaller um or we have to go get property taxes. Um, and so which ones we do and which ones we don't do would be up for debate. Um, and then the other note I have is about, you know, the ten-year existence of of uh the L R C. You know, for some of you may know, I served on the H P C Historic Preservation uh Historic Preservation Commission with uh Councilmember Fahy. And it had a clock as well, and we went back to the voters and we extended it. So it isn't ten years, it's twenty years. Um, and, you know, whatever clock the Urban Renewal Authority has also has the option of extending. And I'm and oh, I'm looking at the mayor who knows more than I do. Um, so I'll I'll just I'll just stop talking about that like immediately. Um, but what I what I uh, thanks, Mayor. Um, but what what you said that I that I I think I am right on is is still that, you know, the funding, um, whatever's left in the account after the ten years can still be used, you know, post those ten years, but but apparently it cannot be extended.
Um, just sorry to interrupt, Councilmember Dickinson. We can turn to the city manager who knows a lot more about all of this. But the there has to be a fixed timeframe when you set an urban renewal area.
Okay.
And it's it's done at the end of it. And then I believe there's a period of time, like on the order of ten years, that you have to wait before you start it again. Do you have to like, you have to turn off urban renewal for a period of time before you say we're blighted again? City manager, do you want to add anything? I mean, explain that better than I did.
Yeah, I I I don't actually know if there's a timeframe before you can restart. Um, but certainly ours ends at the end of of twenty thirty-two. Um, and so again, if there's money left over, you can choose to dedicate that. Let's say, for example, in year thirty-one or thirty-two, if you don't anticipate um future uh expenditures in those years prior to its expiration, you can dedicate that. So for example, you could choose to further pay down bond debt for the underpasses in the urban rural area. Um, because that's money that's been collected during that, I think it's twenty, twenty-five-year period of the urban renewal authority. Um, so, um, but you can't, but it doesn't continue collecting revenues after the twenty thirty-two.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Manager. So the the last thing I'll say, and then and then obviously down there, I see six hands up. Um, is, you know, as I, as I um walk the streets and knock on doors, um, what I can tell you, and I've said this obviously publicly in other council meetings, is um, there was no, for Ward One, there was no uh um bigger issue than connectivity, safety in crossing, um access to other parts of town from parts of town. Um, you know, the northeastern section of our of our community feels disconnected. Um, and that's what I heard from them when I walked their streets is they they don't feel connected. And it's incredibly important to them to be connected and to be safely connected for the kids and themselves. And so while the L R C isn't, you know, necessarily um, you know, running for office and knocking on doors that way, what I can tell you is that the constituents that I spoke to find this to be incredibly important to the to the mayor's um uh pie chart there, you know, that shows it as well is that this is an issue that is incredibly important to our constituents. Um, and it happens to take place a lot within the U R A. And so I think this is a great opportunity for partnership, the infrastructure, the connectivity, the safety, the last mile, the transportation master plan. All these things come together that this is, this is huge. This is an immense, immensely important, huge project that um that that's 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 why we're here. That's why I'm in the discussion, because it's so big and so important. So thank you for uh giving me all that time.
Thank you, Councilmember Dickinson. Uh, Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, thanks. Um, yeah, as far as the the estimates go, so I I'm in construction. Um, those are pretty light estimates. I I think that the updated numbers for twenty twenty-one will be a little bit higher than what you're showing from twenty nineteen. Um, anybody who's picked up a piece of plywood lately is well aware of the skyrocketing costs. Um, but I would say that, you know, in my mind, the most important one within the Urban Renewal Authority is that Main Street South Boulder Road uh underpass. What are our options for being able to do that without raising taxes, without even going to the ballot? How can we work together to knock that one out? Because to me, that one stands out above and beyond all the other ones in terms of reducing blight and increasing connectivity. Um, that's just such a really critical spot, um, right? We talked about the Alfalfa's sort of shopping center Walgreens area, really hurting. Um, this could really benefit that area. We were all really excited about the Rosen Raven, and now that's gone. Um, so, you know, that area is hurting and it needs some help. Can we do this without raising business, without taxing taxing businesses more than they need to be? Um, is that possible? With a large commitment from the L R C, right? I and I'm I'm not afraid of spending money. I just don't want to spend money for the sake of spending money. I want it to have a very clear, positive impact in these areas.
Thank you. Councilmember Lake?
Yeah, a comment and a question. Um, actually of my fellow commissioners on the L R C, because I'm playing, just for people at home, I'm in the some would say enviable, some would say not enviable, uh, position of being a member of council in Ward One, where many of these underpasses uh would be built if they are all built. Um, but also on the L R C and duties to both. Um, but the comment is that, just pulling back for a minute, um, as the Mayor Potem mentioned at the outset, um, we haven't, as separate governments, if you will, uh, or governing bodies, met for such a long time. And this is very good to get together. And and I wanted to commend both my fellow counselors as well as my fellow commissioners for making time, putting the time in. I was the one, um, again, uh, for partly to blame or, if you will, maybe need to take credit, but mostly to push for this meeting. Because I thought it was important for the commissioners to hear from individual council people about uh our views uh and considerations on all of this. And we're, you know, in the middle of this discussion. It's everybody has told uh told you about. Um, uh, so I appreciate that. And and, you know, there was a question on the commission's part that, you know, should we just visit the council meeting and, you know, ask questions and stuff? And I was very adamant that, no, we ought to have a joint meeting and and participate as essentially equals on on this. And I do appreciate both groups doing that. Um, the question that I had was just one of the commissioners. We started with uh some questions from the commissioners. I wanted to make sure, you know, the the mayor, and I do appreciate it, Mayor, that uh answered or at least gave a preliminary answer, as she described it, or provisional answer um about a number of them. But I guess I wanted to to ask the question to the commission about whether prior to right now, I mean, there's a question uh that was just asked, but um whether the other questions that commissioners had have been answered. And, you know, there there's, uh, I think the mayor's getting to this too, probably, uh, whether other members of council have points of view uh that they want to share on the questions that have already been answered as well. Um, and I'll stop there. I'm cutting out because my technology is a little bit sketchy right now.
Thanks, Councilmember Lake. And yeah, I am I am trying to track the questions as they come up, but, you know, this is a discussion. And so people will have different points of views. So really, the point of it is to get questions out on the table, to figure out what information we need to be able to move forward and to identify just where different people are coming from. So I, you know, some of them, some things are rhetorical questions I recognize too and and prompt further debate. Um, but I am trying my best to keep track of the questions that can that we can resolve this evening. Councilmember Fahy?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, um, I also want to thank the commissioners for joining us for this discussion. I think it's important for us all to have the opportunity to present our views and and ideas. Everyone has a a different skill set and a different perspective. And bringing those all together generally comes up with some kind of solution that everyone can live with. Um, so I'm wondering, first, I agree that I don't think it would be a good idea for the L R C to give us all of their money, because they do need to have a continuing fund for their projects aside from our underpasses. Um, and even though they do have underpasses on their list, that isn't the only thing that's on their list or that will become on their list in the next ten years. So I would, I would greatly appreciate their support at some level. Um, I was intrigued with uh City Manager Balzer's comment that even if they don't present or or commit one point five a year to the underpasses, they can commit that at the end of ten years, whatever money they have not spent could be designated to go to paying off that bond. Uh, and so it it could end up being a win-win. If we prioritize that we're going to do them in this order and we run out of money before we get to that sixth one, and all of a sudden L R C says, ah, but we promised you we would give you. Yay, we've all won. So I'm I'm just putting out an idea that perhaps we could come up with creative ways of funding it that would keep everyone happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gorchewski?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'll add a little bit to Graham there. Um, I've also heard from residents on the north side of town that um it's they're they're afraid of sending their kids to L M S by themselves and they're dri- they're driving to it rather than um walking or biking. It's it's close enough to do either, but it's not safe enough. So that's another driver for that um Main Street one. Um, I and I don't know if if this is possible timing-wise, but um have have uh, would it be in, would it be in our interest to um talk to the uh businesses within the U R A and just get their temperature on this as to, do you think this is going to help your bill, um, your business? Um, or would you rather have money invested in something else that maybe we're missing? But, you know, they're they're the ones that are going to be most affected, yeah, with this. So it would be good. I I think Megan did a really good job of of uh trying to uh give them the stimulus money. And and so she's she surveyed a lot of them. I don't know if we can do a quick one. Um, the other thing was, I don't know if the consultant uh produced any data as to uh how much they would be used, because we have three of them. And, you know, I understand, um, you know, I'm I'm in construction too. Uh, if you want to uh save money, you do all of them. But if one or two of them don't aren't used very much, then you've kind of wasted some money. So um I don't know if they did any kind of modeling that that says we expect so many people through this underpass and so many for the other one. Um, so ju- just maybe some more information from the people that uh would be using them and for the people in the urban renewal area.
Thank you. Chairwoman Adler?
Thank you. Um, just a few thoughts um and comments as things have popped up. Um, I think as much as this is a a human issue and um has been emotional even for me at times, like, it's a it's a financial issue in my mind, and it's based on economics. And um personally, I don't see that we have adequate data or financial and economic analysis. And it makes sense because we haven't had time um to to find out whether this is financially viable for the U R A. So hoping we get some answers to that. And, you know, will this deliver any economic ROI? The question I also have. And then I'm just thinking, I, I was like studying our old, um, documents and the LRC application for assistance. And I was looking at, um, what we, what we review, like, what are our goals that we review applications under? And I know this is different, but to me, it's, it's similar in that this is a proposal and we're trying to figure out if and how we can contribute funding. So removal of blight would be the, is the first. And I'm just taking this straight from what we approved, what council approved in 2019. Positive effects on property values, which to me is a big piece of this discussion that I, I want to talk about. And then advancement of U R A. Other pieces, I think I'm going on a little bit. There, but I think to some of the other points, I'll, I'll move on to, to other projects and opportunities. I know there were some comments about that, but I'm, one thing that we've talked about, for example, is facade improvement program, where we're wanting to, um, budget potentially 2022 and beyond. Um, and we did 150,000 for 2021. Kind of envisioning this, initial discussions as a, as a big program to incentivize, um, and maintain properties, like in the whole U R A. So to me, that's a big project that is going to be a part of, um, our plan. Other, other projects that I'm foreseeing, potentially involvement in Villa Square Shopping Center. And I know this takes works with developers, but potentially the former Arnold property, um, the Pine Street and 42 mixed youth development, um, that obviously Mike Krenzoff is involved in. Uh, redevelopment in former Wildwood, expansion at Moxie, uh, other development. And then our projects that aren't budgeted for, like Phase Two Wayfinding, bike connectivity, incentives for EV charging stations, pedestrian, there's like a long list. So, so it's there. So I think that has to be part of the discussion. Obviously, I want to be a part of the collaboration. All right, I'm done.
You, Commissioner Tofti?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to make a couple of comments, um, in the order I wrote them down. Uh, first of all, to Heather's point, obviously, we don't want to end up with any money in a balance that we can't spend. And if we can, uh, dedicate funds to, uh, paying off a balance or reducing a term for a bond issue or any other possible financing, that certainly is something that as, um, 2032 approaches, it seems like a no brainer. I mean, I, that can happen with a couple of votes of council and the LRC, I think. The second thing, um, to Jeff's point, um, two things actually. We, we actually are reliant on private property owners to come to us with projects. And frankly, aside from 824 Main, hardly anyone has. So for us to find projects that are going to, um, encumber us to a, a large degree, we have not actually been able, uh, aside from the D-Lo project, we haven't spent large amounts of money. And I believe that we will see, when we get numbers at our next meeting, the projections for revenues, we are going to have substantial funds that we need to find projects for. And so we're going to have to either convince property owners like Coal Creek Station or, um, 809 Main, um, properties that, that require, not just $125,000 or $150,000 or, or art projects under the, uh, the underpass. We do need to come up with some things that require larger amounts of money. And also, the Jeff's point that I think we need to keep in front of us always is that some of these projects that come to us, that his point about the three to five year window for us to be able to commit to projects, the last five years of the LRC is really going to be winding down. It's possible that a project could come to us, that's, that's a high dollar project, but we can't, we can't make that happen. So the underpasses are a way for us to, to commit larger amounts of money. I do agree that we need more analysis before we move forward. But, but I do like the fact that, that the underpasses, um, are, are big projects. And to this day, other than D-Lo, we really haven't had, and the underpass at D-Lo, we really haven't committed to big projects. Just one last comment. Uh, Mayor, when you showed the, uh, the underpass at Main Street, I, I certainly hope there's some way, and I know it's difficult, to not have the northern entrance to that underpass end up way by the railroad track. I know it's an engineering feat, but, uh, I would certainly think that for it to stimulate, the Walgreen area, um, shopping center, somehow it needs to turn and get to the west. So, uh, those are my comments.
Thank you. Um, next in the queue is Commissioner Gambale.
Thank you. Um, I am really impressed. I have never heard this much agreement in a meeting ever. All of your insights and knowledge on this topic is incredible. I've heard a lot on strategy, funding, phasing. I'm curious, what is the best case outcome or agreement that we can come to tonight? That will help, um, council move forwards? Because I don't think we're making a decision tonight, but maybe what we're talking about helps you with your strategy, your funding, or your phasing. It seems like we're all supportive. It's just a question of what's our best strategy to move forwards?
Thank you. Mayor Potemon?
Give me a break, I was taking notes. Thank you, Mayor. All jokes aside, I appreciate it. You know, I, I want to make, I want to make sure, um, in this meeting that, if the commissioners have any comments and questions, that you're not holding anything back. Because, you know, what, all of your thoughts and all your dedication is informing us in our decision and our strategy and informing, uh, as Gambale, Commissioner Gambale says, how do we move forward? Um, and, and what moving forward actually looks like? You know, what, how much, how much investment do we do in infrastructure? And so forth. And one of the things that, uh, has been mentioned about, like, what's most important as far as the underpasses? I believe, and I'm sure, sure my colleagues in the council correct me if I'm wrong, but you know, the top three that we've been talking about is South Boulder, Main, South Boulder, and Highway 42, and the one on 42. Um, the other three are amenities that, you know, have some value. Um, and so I, I just want to make sure that you're clear that those are really our highest priorities. And if we were to say we're going to do some portion of the six, those would be in that top portion. You know, to, to me, it's, it's really important to find a way to size this and fund this in a way that we can do it with internal, uh, funds as much as possible. If there is some minor aspect to property taxes, um, I'll entertain that, we get to a vote. But, um, as Councilor Lipton, you know, educated us on, if we raise a property tax by a dollar on your house, that means it's for a similar, uh, valued business property, it's $4. So, you know, we don't want to do something that's going to never negatively impact, um, what you're trying to protect and promote. So I think that's, that's very important. But, you know, I, there is, you're being asked to do a lot of things. And if we look at your current budget, there are a lot of projects on there. But as Commissioner Tofti said, um, and I may be putting words in your, words in your mouth, Bob, but, um, you know, those don't add up to the amount of funding that you're going to be having over the period of time for the next 10 to 11 years. And at some point, we're going to, you, you will have to, um, find a way to invest that in such a way where it does have long-term, uh, impacts for the urban renewal area. And, you know, it is an investment. We're talking about, uh, tens of millions of dollars. And so, you know, that's the thing, there are a long list of projects, but as I add those up, that's not tens of millions of dollars. That's, you know, some millions of dollars. We don't know what's in the future request. There haven't been a lot of requests, I think that's been true. Will there be a lot of requests in the next five years that, that will have to be funded by the LRC? I don't know the answer to that. That's something we have to be cognizant of and be prepared to be able to fund, um, if necessary. But, you know, ju, just, you know, just thinking about how we fund this and what size we fund this, you know, it'll come down to really, for me, you know, I, I'm the kind of person who looks at the financials on this to say what's possible. And, you know, looking, once we have more information, and I think on June 16th, you'll have more information from, uh, Director Kevin Watson on the revenues and projected expenditures. And that will, you know, inform you and it will inform us about what may be potential. And it puts us in a better position to be able to make some decisions. To say tonight, we're looking at a commitment would be completely unfair, because you don't have the data or the projections that, uh, you'd be looking at. But I am hoping that es- essentially in those top three, um, that we can find some way to collaborate. I think it's, uh, benefits to the citizens as well as the businesses. And please, don't hesitate if you have questions or comments, because that's why we're doing this tonight. Thank you again.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you. I really appreciate hearing everybody's thoughts and reflections tonight. I think it really provides some good food for thought. And as you've all said, we have a lot to consider. And I don't think that, you know, what's at issue is that our support or lack thereof for underpasses. Because as a mom to two young kiddos, I want to be able to travel safely around our town without having to worry about a car, um, impacting that. So, support for underpasses aside, I think we're all in favor of those as, as citizens. But again, going back to our commission, and as a new commissioner, I will say that coming on, we had our whole, um, kind of plan put in front of us, our, our budget. And then we felt like we were going to get to move forward on some things. And then we were asked to pretty much stop and wait until we got direction on what was going to happen with these underpasses. So that was a little, and again, I'm a new commissioner, so maybe this is typical, I don't know. Um, and it's about the long term, I certainly understand that. So that was just an interesting, like, what's happening? Why all of a sudden are we being asked to not move forward on some of these things? That we were very much ready to move forward and after a year of COVID are really just eager. I mean, that's why I'm participating on the LRC, I just want to, um, stimulate our, our local downtown businesses and, and support our community. So just a little bit of reflection and framing, at least from where I'm coming from on trying to wrap my head around where this all is coming from, what's the context? While keeping in mind those pieces that we can move forward on, like, today, um, as the LRC and really show support for, for the U R A and the businesses in the U R A, because we all know that they are hurting. I've spoken to a few, um, just as a patron of those, to try to understand what their experience has been like over the last year, 18 months, and, and understand that, that they need the support. So after that framing, I want to just, I think it was Alex who mentioned this, but I, I think it would be really wonderful and valuable from both the LRC and council's approach in showing support for our businesses, to go and poll the businesses and say, hey, we've polled the community, but what about you? What would be beneficial to you? What do you need? How can we, as the LRC, who has funding dollars, show up for you? And one of my questions, I think, uh, Bob was saying, or maybe it wasn't Bob, or he was reflecting somebody else's comment, but we can't approach businesses, we have to wait for them to come to us. Is that true? I, is that, um, a legal requirement of the U R A that we have to wait for business to come to us? And then, you know, do the businesses know that we are here to support them? I mean, I think this is a conversation more for the LRC than for this. But, um, I think it, this whole conversation just presents us with a really unique opportunity to get, I don't remember who said this, but what is our plan for the funding? And get really specific on that, because we do have a lot in our work plan and we can't do all of it. So just, just wanting, wanting to, to, um, be clear on the fact that being here to support these business, businesses and if infrastructure, including underpasses, is one of those things, great. At least they, they have been heard. Um, and, and they feel like they've been heard. The other question I have, which I, I won't frame it, but I understand that it might be a really weird, um, question. In terms of like an affordable tax rate on a bond issue, thinking about people who are on the lower socioeconomic side of things in our community, is, is something like the sliding scale tax a possibility? Or at a certain property tax rate, you don't have to pay income? Thinking about that burden of having to pay increased property taxes? Just curious if council has considered something like that, or if that will be folded into the bond proposals? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Adler?
I just want to, uh, touch on a few things, ask a few questions. Corey and others have mentioned polling businesses. Doesn't seem like there's time to me or opportunity to do that. And then I don't know how exactly that information would be used. How would that change the decision? Like, if 51% say no, and, you know, 49 say yes, is that, how does that work? I, I agree that that's important information. I think that kind of built into my question is, how do council members feel like? Because I don't, I don't think we'll have the data, right? And how these underpasses will truly eliminate blight and stimulate reinvestment in the area? Seeing that this is such a huge project and we have to do share responsibilities to the property owners, how do y'all think that this supports our mission in terms of the, the property, the property value perspective? Obviously, I see the investment in the infrastructure is important, but, but part of what we do is, is provide opportunities for businesses in the U R A, support projects, improvements. And I know we do have, but, so we're curious about thoughts on that.
I'll just weigh in, because I have Graham's question at the top of my list. So before I go back to starting next round of discussion, I'll just, um, weigh in. And again, I just want to reiterate, like, I'm not, my role isn't to, like, try to answer questions, because a lot of the questions are open-ended and have many interpretations. But I'll weigh in with my feedback and where I do have information that I can add into the conversation, I'm happy to. So the, the first question I had on the list was around, what are the options for getting Main Street done without raising taxes at all? And I think that's part of how council is framing, looking at this. Like, if we can get sufficient support from the Urban Renewal Authority, you know, we've already had a discussion about how much we feel that we can put in by, you know, tightening our own, uh, belt. We'll, we can see how far that would get us. We do have pretty good cost estimates for Main Street, but as Graham pointed out, construction inflation has been significant since 2019. And the numbers that were currently used, um, using in estimating for the bond issue have taken that into account. So I think that Graham, the way, or Commissioner Smith, the way from that, that's exactly right on, you know, around what can we do internally? And all of us are really approaching it from that spirit of, you know, we would hate to ask for additional funds if we can really do this without that step. So that's what, you know, that's what we're looking at, that's what we're trying to understand. But in reality, you know, we don't just have $10 million on the shelf to do that project. And so it would take substantial contribution from the urban renewal area. area. And the longer we wait, the more these projects are continuing to cost us. So, you know, if we could have, if we only could have done them 15 years ago and and every generation is going to say that, right? Like, oh, man, why didn't we do these when underpasses costs? The the future generation will look at it and say, why didn't you do these when interest rates were less than 3%? And underpasses only cost $10 million. They're going to ask that at some future state. Sorry, I'm hearing some echo. I'm not sure if someone could mute. So so that's the first one. True, and Alec, Commissioner Grochowski brought up about if she, if we should talk to businesses in the URA, absolutely, always. Talking to people is fantastic and polling and getting more information and surveying. But I think that Commissioner Adler put it correctly that, you know, on the timeframe we're looking at, like doing a scientifically statistic poll isn't going to fit in. And there's also a danger of like, you don't want to pit residents against businesses or businesses against residents, right? And so like, I think you would want to structure it in a way that was more around what Commissioner Williams was saying on like, what kinds of things are important to you to eliminate blight, to make it easier to do business and things like that. But on that same point, there's been a lot of talk that, you know, the URA is just here to support businesses. And I just want to say from my perspective, that's not entirely the mission. Like, if you look at it, it's to eliminate blight and the things that Commissioner Adler was pointing out. And so like North End is almost all residential units. And and so that entire area is in the Urban Renewal Authority. And the North End community has made it loud and clear as Councilmember Dickinson has said that, you know, there's a disconnected feeling. So the more we can do to connect that neighborhood, like their property tax that would be going to the school district is instead going to you all. Their property tax that would be coming to the city is instead going to you all. Their property tax that would be going, you know, so on and on. So I think it's not only businesses. It's absolutely an important part because that's where we see a lot of light in our community with residential property values being so high. But that North End neighborhood was included in the urban renewal area because of faulty road conditions, faulty lot layout, other deficiencies that were listed in the findings, in the light findings. So I do think connecting those neighbors to the downtown area, to the core area, is an important piece of urban renewals. So from my perspective, it's not only about the business community. And to Commissioner Adler's question around how do we know and what will happen with return on investment and things? I think that's fantastic. And if you actually go back and read the meeting minutes back from like I think, I think Councilmember Lipton was around then on planning commission. And of course, Toffey was around then, but a lot of us are new to the discussions since then. But at the time when when the area was being formed, there was a real ask from someone in the community to have a study done that would show like return on investment of the urban renewal area as a whole. And the council decided to forego that analysis. And so like the decisions that have been made to this point have been made absent that kind of analysis and have been based more on gut reaction of like, if we do the South Street Gateway, will that be positive or negative for property values? And the sense was generally that it would be positive, or will that be positive or negative for redevelopment? So I don't disagree that we should, we should strive to have that kind of analysis, but I don't think that it's going to be presented in time for your meeting. And I have just a question of my own on the facade improvement program, you know, so that kind of program seems really appealing because there are dilapidated buildings. But it also seems incredibly hard to implement and like incredibly staff intensive. So I would just hope that in your budget, when you put something like that in, that you would also put a proportional increase in staffing contribution because we'll have to have additional staff to be able to do that kind of a program that'll take outreach and follow up and all of those things. So the nice thing, like the more we can collaborate, the more our staff can work on one thing instead of two. And if there's two things we're working on, then we need more staff to be able to accomplish that, just because we are a small city and we can only do so much. And then Commissioner Toffey brought up some really good points around Coal Creek Station. I think on that one, it'll be really interesting to see, you know, that's a residential development in the urban renewal area with a bit of commercial in the front. It'll be really interesting to see what kind of stimulus is proposed. Like, do we really believe that we need to stimulate residential development with the residential property market doing what it is? Or are there infrastructure deficiencies that we should really focus on that would make that development hard? So like access to South Boulder Road, like how will that development access South Boulder Road? And that the offsite improvements triggered as requirements because of a development, it'll be really interesting to look at and understand like what impacts that creates for the rest of the community and who will bear those costs in the long run. Mark Gumbalay, Commissioner Gumbalay really framed it great. What is, what it, what is the best case moving forward? Really, the goal of tonight is just to have a discussion and collaborate, get people thinking, get people trying to understand, you know, where we are, where we have gaps in information and where we might be able to fill in information. But from my perspective, the best case scenario moving forward is to really get the spirit of collaboration and then determine where there are synergies and opportunities to move things forward. And I completely agree. Like, there was a lot said that shows there's a lot of alignment and then tactic and strategy is where we need to figure out how to move forward. So that's fantastic. And then there was a question around, is it possible to have a sliding scale on the taxes? So people that have a harder time are not impacted as greatly. And so the property tax in itself is, you know, compared to like something like a sales tax, maybe less, the less regressive of the two tools that we have available to us as a city council. But what we've done in other areas is set up funds specifically for residents who income qualify. So like, for example, at the rec center, we have programs to offset costs of the rec center for the water utility. If folks can't pay their bill, then they have access to funds. So we could talk about setting up a fund for low income residents to access to help offset property tax costs. But we have not talked about that yet, but that would be something we could absolutely talk about doing. I think I covered a number of the questions and comments and points, and I just want to thank everybody for the really great discussion so far. And we will try to wrap up by around eight. And so if people want to make kind of closing remarks and comments and think about like, you know, next steps in moving forward, and then also whatever else you'd like to say. Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, no. Point well made about like the north side of town and paving improvements and that kind of stuff. I mean, I I think I speak for most of the committee when I say we, we want to help, right? We we have money. I think it's pretty clear that that fund is only going to increase and we don't have enough projects to really eat into that. We want to help. We want to do the projects that make the biggest bang for the buck. My concern with this large package of six is not all underpasses are created the same, right? They're they're not all going to deliver the same benefits we're looking for. And by going the tax route, we may be, businesses are struggling on Main Street, right? They're they're on the edges. It's been a horrible year for them. They're starting to come back. Things are looking good. This, I don't want this project to be the tipping point where we start losing some businesses that we're trying to create connectivity to, right? We've created an underpass to nowhere. So any opportunity we can do to contribute money and funds and use this, these taxpayers, this property tax money effectively that we already have is much better, even if we have to break packages up and go over a longer duration. You know, none of us disagree with the value of some of these underpasses. I just disagree with putting that burden on the taxpayers of Louisville when we have funds that that we could use to do it. And and I think that's a, that's something that we all, you know, we feel frustrated that we don't have more projects to kind of weed through and find out the best ones. It feels like anything that comes our way, we're, yeah, that's great. Because we do have the funds and we don't have enough products to do it. I just don't want to invest in something that's so large and so long term that may have ramifications that we, the opposite of what we're looking to get at. And that'll be the last thing I say tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. We won't hold you to that if you change your mind. That's fine. Councilmember Lee?
Okay, I just want to make sure I was off mute. There's some really, really good questions that have been asked. And and actually, I have a question, I'm going to put my LRC hat on for a minute, but it's not not solely doing that. But there have been a number of questions that have kind of asked around the issue of as to the the underpasses that are proposed for inclusion implicitly in the ballot measure. What what is, well, let me, let me add one thing to that. The information that is not, I mean, I think we know as council and and we need to make clear to the commission that they should know, I think they probably do, that they're not going to get on mid-month information relating to how much benefit, community benefit is going to come from to the commission's mission is going to come from the three underpasses. And that's a function of time. And there's a lot that can be said about that. But, you know, that's an issue that we really should talk about. And and I think is worth councils articulating a little bit more about their view, views about those three underpasses. I think we've talked a bit already about the Main Street one. And I think it's, there seems to be a lot of support. But the other two, I think, you know, I I guess I would, I'd love to hear from the other council members and from you, Mayor, too. What you believe the specific kinds of economic benefits to the URA might come from those two underpasses?
Thank you. Commissioner Adler?
Mayor, I'm actually asking the question to be answered.
I've been, I've been documenting all the questions the whole time and answering them like in a queue so that people, other people, it's not just for me to answer. It's for the whole group, like you asked everyone's opinions. And so I'll go in the queue and I'll continue documenting questions. And then, you know, when it's my turn again, I'll go through the slug of them. But everyone is also welcome to answer these questions as they come. And you you ask the question to other folks as well. So I'll give them a chance in queue and then when it comes back, you have my opinion. Commissioner Adler?
Yeah. I know I've shared a lot. I think major concern is that we have to make a really serious decision about a whole lot of money in like a couple of weeks. And there's very limited design plans from what I understand, financial analysis, and we just, we have to make a serious financial decision and commitment. And I think that's the unknown is really, is worrying me. I'm definitely in favor of the concept. I think it would do a lot for the area, but I think that's my, my biggest question as at this point. As in a few weeks, we have to commit to a certain amount of money from what I understand about the timeline. So would be curious about thoughts on that.
Thank you. Commissioner or Councilmember Fagin?
Thank you. Yeah, I just got a couple of points for for Commissioner Adler's just recent question. I think what we're planning on doing, first of all, is prioritizing which of the underpasses will do, in which order, based on the amount of money that they're costing and the both for safety and for economic benefit. Second, we're trying to self-fund it. We would really hope to not have to go to the voters and added another property taxes. Just doesn't seem like a great time, especially since we are adding a tax, the bag tax that will be going into effect in January, which would be at the same time that this one would take effect. And then third, if we do have to go to a vote of the residents, we, I am assuming, and this is is a big assumption, but I'm assuming that we would ask for more than we actually think we'll need in order to cover increases in costs. And think like we did with the rec center, we asked for more than we thought it was going to cost in order to cover unforeseen issues that come up. And so I just said, one way or another, we want to get this through. And we want, we would like ideally to build all six underpasses. But if we can only do three, that's what we'll do. But we're trying to get as much help to do it in as much, in as kind and appreciative way as we can. So your help would be greatly appreciated.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks for kind of framing the, you know, sort of final arguments, if you will. You know, I, I think that you know, as we prioritize these underpasses, regardless of our conversation with the URA, some of the most important underpasses are the ones that are in the URA. So, you know, in some ways, if we're in a, if we're in some sort of aggressive negotiation, you know, if we can only do one underpass, it's probably in the URA. So if you guys don't want to participate, you're still going to get your underpass in the URA because it's so important. And if we can only do two, you're probably going to get a second. But the point is collaboration, right? So if we only do three, maybe all three are in the URA. And if, and if the LRC funds $0 for three underpasses inside the URA, that to me would be offensive. That would be a crazy moment that that the city council has put $1.5 million a year towards debt payment, towards three underpasses that are all inside the URA. And the LRC put nothing towards that. That would be crazy to me. Now, if we do six, then it's complicated and all those things. And I, and I really appreciate all these, all the iterations of what could possibly happen and all the different pieces. But I think, I think you're hearing a pretty consistent piece from council, which is we'd prefer not to go for more taxes. We have to go to the the public no matter what. But for additional property taxes, we'd like not to do that. And for additional property taxes for the businesses, we'd like not to do that. And so I think to Commissioner Smith's point, like, we, we actually need the LRC in order to not do that. In order to not go to the public for additional property taxes, we need the cooperation of the LRC. And to Chair Adler's point, you know, it is really quick. And the thing I'm, I'm concerned about, right, and I'm, I think some of you know, I'm in in business, in the business world and in investment world. And and what I understand is, were we to wait a year or two years, the interest rates are going to go up, the construction costs are going to go up. And whatever we were going to do this year is just going to be more expensive and we're going to get less of it next year. So to the mayor's point, like, I wish they had built all these underpasses 10 years ago. And 10 years from now, they'll wish we'd all built them today. And so I I'm just, I'm trying to get the most we can out of the current moment, which is we have a decent amount of funds, we have good interest rates. Construction costs are what they are, which are not fantastic, but I don't see them getting much better. And so I'm hoping that we can literally save millions of dollars by doing this quickly as opposed to what's, what's the, what's the phrase, you know? Sorry, I'm, I'm blanking on, I got a good phrase. But anyway, you know, we'd like to have all the information to make a good decision. But, you know, to have enough information to make a good decision is maybe, is maybe good enough, right? And so there's a much better one sentence version of that quote. But I think we have enough information to make a good decision that will save us millions of dollars if this is a project that is important to us. And so as a closing argument to go back to running for office, there is not one single subject that was brought up more often than underpasses. This was the number one most important issue for our constituents. And so I'm pushing for this harder than I push for most things because it's clearly a priority for our residents and we all represent the same people. And so it's expensive, it's quick, it's complicated, it's going to get more expensive. All those things are true, but it doesn't stop me from being super supportive of the whole concept and really hoping that we can get it all done without, without having to raise taxes. and really hoping that we can get it all done without, without having to raise taxes or without doing half of it. But I, I think, I think I've said enough. I think I've probably, um, repeated myself enough. So I'll, I'll close there, Mayor. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Adler.
So for listening, um, I'm hearing a lot about how we're not wanting to take this to the taxpayers. Obviously I agree with that. We don't have to. Um, and that we're looking to contribute, both of us, in the best way possible. Honestly, like laying my cards on the table, I, I don't, I'm, I'm trying to understand, like, opportunity to delay or not. And I would be curious to see what delaying to the next cycle or a year looks like and how can we, can we fund this without the taxpayers at all? It's just, it's, it feels like a confusing cycle. And I'm not, I'm not really sure what the solution is. And does our contribution take the place of a ta- the taxpayer's contribution? Um, I'm, I don't think so, but, um, I guess since we are closing here, where do we go from here? Uh, expectations, I guess, of council, knowing that we have to decide in a few weeks and, and wanting us to be in alignment and collaboration. Um, I know it's open-ended, but I'm not really sure where this goes.
Thank you. Councilmember Lipton.
Well, I, I would hate to see us put perfect or allow perfect to get in the way of good. And I, I, I think, you know, the conversation's been very interesting. I don't think we actually have that much disagreement on a number of issues. And I, as a, as a process moving forward, I mean, one of the themes I've heard from both the commission and both the council is that, you know, it's appropriate for the commission perhaps to contribute funds towards a project or projects that actually eliminate or prevent blight. And, you know, that is one of the guiding principles of this. And that there has, it has been suggested that, you know, at least one underpass, and perhaps multiple underpasses could meet that goal or objective. And, and that would be largely by basically bridging what's a geographically bifurcated community. So I, you know, I was probably the last person standing. I was on planning commission when we were doing those large annexations on the north side of town. And, you know, just as background to you all, um, you know, there was an annexation war going on between us and Lafayette. I, Lafayette wanted to annex those properties too. We, we thought it was very important in the interest of our community to get control of those properties, control the zoning, control development, uh, so that we weren't really the, you know, the back of stage for Lafayette and they could do, you know, pretty much what they wanted to do. And in fact, it would have direct consequences on our small community. So we negotiated with property owners and we did deals with developers and we basically beat Lafayette and concluded then what is the annexation wars. But in doing that, you know, you were all, we were making a covenant that we would incorporate those areas north of town into the rest of Louisville. I mean, we didn't want a geographically bifurcated community. So, and, and having said that, you know, it seems like there's at least one underpass. I think there's a very strong interest in, which is the, uh, Main Street underpass as a way of connecting the north part of the community to, to Main Street, which is really what would help eliminate or, um, um, prevent blight in the, um, in the U R A or the, uh, the district. But that could be wrong. And, uh, and, uh, maybe it's one of the other underpasses. But I think we also agreed that, you know, there's only three underpasses that even have the potential to meeting your criteria, which is, you know, eliminating or preventing blight. And I think that it would not be a stretch and it wouldn't be terribly burdensome to ask staff just to look at those three and do some kind of cost benefit or some traffic analysis in terms of the usage of those underpasses and likely where that traffic would go and have that in, and ask staff to provide you that information before we go much further with this. Because by having that information, you might actually eliminate one, perhaps two, or focus on one that seems to be exceptional. And I don't think it would be that difficult to put that together. And I think that would be a reasonable request in a way to kind of move the conversation forward with having a little bit more, a little bit more data or, you know, at least projections in terms of usage and where that usage would go to. So I, I would throw that on the table and suggest that is part of the next steps.
Thank you, Councilmember Lipton. Commissioner Toffey.
The, uh, the term eliminate blight has come up a number of times and there are, I think, 12, um, various points to eliminating that blight. And, and one of them is certainly a poor street layout. And if we move the wording that was set up in the seventies when urban renewal, um, law was first, um, put forward into the 2020s, connectivity is every bit as important as faulty street layout. Now, I think you could actually shift it and say that, uh, connectivity eliminates blight without getting more specific than that. And, um, I guess I would be, if we're laying our cards on the table, I would be in favor of committing some amount of funds from the L R C to any or all of the three projects. And how much that is, I'm hoping we'll get more, you know, how it affects us. I'm hoping we'll get more information at the June 16th meeting. Because we have asked for those three scenarios. But, um, you know, my final comment would be that I certainly am in favor of committing some funds to these projects.
Thank you, Commissioner Toffey. Mayor Pretend Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to thank everybody for their, um, their candor, their listening, uh, but because I've heard a lot of people, you know, referring what other people have been saying. Um, I think, uh, Councilor Lipton said a lot of things I was going to say, but, you know, with regard to the, the three underpasses, you know, they were all mentioned very highly, um, in the transportation master plan. And that transportation master plan looked at health and safety, things like economic benefits. If you look at where those go, um, they connect not only for children going to school, but for people coming from downtown and going north or north to downtown, um, all within the urban renewal area. So, um, to me, it would be good as Councilor Lipton talked about, to see if we can get more information. And um, there might be more in the transportation master plan, but I, I decided not to pull it up in the middle of the meeting uh, to give us more of that information. But I think a lot of it's there and, you know, the, the traffic information is probably part of that plan and, and Director Sakaro could probably help us with that or at least provide information during your next L R C meeting to, to inform that. But, um, I just want to thank everybody for the discussion tonight. And I think we're you know, re- reaching a point of collaboration or at least discussion that I hope, uh, helps move us forward. Whether it's one or three of these, um, whatever we do, will make an impact and a difference for the city of Louisville. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Adler.
Yeah, I, I think I, I just want to echo Jeff and Dennis's points as I hear them about for us, or what, maybe what I would like to see is understanding the use and the benefits of those three underpasses. And that likely might, will answer my questions around the economic, direct economic benefit that we might see through those. And maybe that's Maine and um, South Boulder Road, or maybe that's all three. But I think having that information would be helpful. And it sounds like there's some consensus that that could be a good next step, um, for our next meeting to know more information. That would be my closing comments. And yeah, thanks for your time. And, and yeah, I really hope we can find an opportunity to collaborate in the right way that makes sense and that's financially feasible. And so I think this was a good start. Even though I had a lot of hard questions, and so like it spoke out a lot.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. All right. So there were a lot of great questions in this last round. Um, Councilmember Lay asked around, you know, what everyone felt the economic benefit of, I guess it was self-evident what the economic benefit at Main Street was. And that's why Councilmember Lay honed in on the other two in the urban renewal area. So from my perspective, it's, it's also self-evident. So if you look at the, uh, King Super Shopping Center, you know, over time, we've seen big lots left. When you look at the condition survey, it talks about Hobby Lobby and Big Lots and things like that. So those stores are no longer there. We now have a Planet Fitness and later this year, we're hoping that, that East Hardware comes in and the end cap space. And so, you know, if you think about Planet Fitness's success, like having connectivity, bridging that connectivity and getting people to be able to access the gym, getting people to be able to get to the grocery store, to the fast food restaurants, to the restaurants. Uh, that type of infrastructure investment has a catalytic effect. And we can look in Northland and Thornton and Westminster, uh, in, um, Boulder even, in the communities around us where they have put infrastructure in like this. And then you've seen reinvestment in the properties that they're adjacent, adjacent to because of the improved access. Uh, Councilmember Lipton really put it very well. It bridges this bifurcated community where you're able to get people walking through an area. And then they say, oh, you know, hey, I go that route. You know, maybe that will be my gym. Maybe that will be my restaurant. Maybe that will be my grocery store. I'll stop there on the way home. Um, so this type of infrastructure investment can absolutely be catalytic for the economic conditions and property values. And if we target our Economic Vitality Director to really look at reinvestment in these areas where we're putting infrastructure, we could really see some major success there. Similarly, somewhere along the ball fields, we, you know, the, the most obvious example in my opinion is the commuter rail. Um, there is talk about front range passenger rail. There is talk about commuter rail coming back to the surface. I know it makes everyone feel overwhelmed and like, oh, don't talk about this again. This is too hard. This is too big. It's not going to happen. But like, these discussions really are ongoing. We really are paying taxes for this still. Like, there really are talks in the 2050 plan and including it. And for things like that to come true, it really is a marathon. And each of us as commissioners and council members have to do our part to run the leg of the marathon. So like, we're handed the baton. It's a plan that shows where our station is. It shows where the parking is. And we have to further the effort if we're ever going to finish the marathon. We take the baton and we continue running with it. So I see that as the most obvious example of the economic benefit of that location. But our open space really is a draw. Um, I've talked to some of the bicycle sales, um, in town that we have a couple of different stores that sell bicycles. And they've talked to me about that being a way that they can test drive their bikes. They can, you know, have access to the trail system. People can ride between Louisville and Lafayette. Really, it can be a catalytic investment. So I'm happy to talk further offline about how there's economic benefit to the other two, but I think that they are strong, um, contenders for that, uh, if not just the bifurcation that Councilmember Lipton talked about. Um, then there was a comment around, you know, it's really hard to make this commitment with all the unknown information. And then I think Councilmember Dickinson put it just very, very well. You can make, you can make a decision not to do anything because you have complete, incomplete information, but that in itself is a decision and it can be a missed opportunity. And so we all have seen what's happened with construction inflation and we have a unique opportunity with interest rates being very low. So, you know, we could, could you delay a year? Yes, absolutely. And would that be the right decision? Maybe, maybe not, but we are faced with a decision point now. And so we'll use the information we have available to us and determine each individually if that's enough information for us to make a decision. And maybe some people feel like it isn't and other people will feel like it is. But d- deciding something is a decision. So you could be missing opportunities in doing that. So in, in, in closing, I'll just say, um, I really appreciate everybody's efforts. This has been a crazy last year for all of us, um, trying to navigate the pandemic and understand how we can continue doing what we're supposed to be doing, plus all these additional new responsibilities. Uh, and very much looking forward to being able to get back together with everybody in person on a more regular basis. Uh, so that we can start to have more conversations and dialogue. So these things seem less like big surprises or big lifts out of nowhere. Uh, but just more like an ongoing dialogue where we're continuing to connect. So I look forward to that. And Mayor Pretend Maloney put it perfectly. Just really, truly thank you from the bottom of all of our hearts for working on all of this, for taking the time to read all the information, understand it, and do your very best job to work toward eliminating blight and to making the revitalization area the best it can possibly be. So thank you so much from all of us. And I can't wait to find out how we all can continue to work together into the future. I hope everybody has a great night and we are adjourned.
Thank you.